Yeah, people are just starting to pop. A couple of people are popping in, but that's, we can go ahead.
All right. Good morning. I would like to call a meeting to order at eight oh one AM. Don't mind my voice is a little raspy, but I am awake.
It's actually not eight oh one, is it?
I'm sorry, it's, you're nine oh two.
What time are you in right now?
Seven.
Okay.
Yeah, seven in the Midwest. That was a good thing to figure out on Sunday night.
Sorry.
Don't mind me. So with that said, we have one agenda item, the FY twenty five budget. Anyone else, would anyone like to modify the agenda? Is there, are there any changes? I don't have, I have the minutes. I just didn't send them to Charlene to post, so I apologize. They were done like the day we had the meeting. So we're all good with our sole agenda item. And with that, I will turn it over to Glenn and Peter to share some hopefully good news.
Great. Thank you. So as you all know, we've been kind of in a holding pattern here for a while, just trying to get a sense of what this budget cycle would bring. Lots of communication and conversation with the town, with Nick's select board. There was, as you all know, a select board meeting or finance meeting yesterday. There are a lot of kind of pieces at play. Glenn and I have been kind of doing our best to both look ahead and envision in terms of what the needs are here. And also kind of read the tea leaves in terms of where we are on the town level. I know that there's a, the select board meeting tonight will be helpful, I think, to get more direction from select board leaders around where we are headed as a town. We think we have a fair bit of information based on the meeting yesterday, conversations with Nick, et cetera, to know kind of, I think roughly where we stand. I did want to start before we start talking about what level service is, and Glenn's got a slide presentation to share about level service. So we're going to kind of go through that momentarily, but I just did want to say that I think we need to be, and you know, as a town, I think, we need to be start, we need to start talking about what we really want to see in our schools and looking at our current spending and our trajectory and the, I think the, the kind of thought around, can we squeak by? Can we squeak by if we continue to operate in this kind of mindset? I don't think we're going to get to where we need to be. And if you look at, you know, our needs-based budget that we've already presented and that million dollars that that we've added, those are not just superfluous ads that, you know, someone had a wish list and we went and worked on a wish list and dropped it over into a PowerPoint. Those are things that we are looking at in terms of building systems here and getting to the level that as we look at our peers and we look at the spending of our peers. You all know, we'll go through this today on slide thirteen. We've got a list of, of over three years, the, the spending per pupil of our, our peer institutions and us. We are still pretty low in the bottom quartile. That means we don't have certain positions that other districts have that we know kind of based on research, based on, on systems design, we are going to need if we want to move the needle and serve all students. So I just want to preface this conversation with, with that. And I think this is something that we need to continue to talk about with, with our community. So people can understand that investing in these things is, is going to, if we're doing the work right, is going to have a direct impact on what our students are experiencing. So with that, do you want to Glenn, pull up the slides and take us through kind of where we are with level service and give people a sense of kind of what we know thus far about the, the kind of bottom line with the town?
Sure. At yesterday's meeting, it was, I know you've all seen most of these slides for the, for our budget. We've done them a few times and a lot of the slides are the same. The, at yesterday's meeting, when Amy and Nick presented to the select boards, finance subcommittee, Erin and and Ben, they had, Erin and Ben had some questions about why was our level service budget the percent that it was? So I was going to go through that again. I don't notice they're in attendance, but I'll do it anyway. And we'll
Actually, Erin's going to join in a couple of minutes. I don't know if you can buy us two or three minutes, but she's joining. You should see her soon.
Oh, okay. Yes, because I was, but my intent was to do this so that they could see it again or see it for the first time. Let me cut ahead a little bit then and we'll go back when, when Erin and Ben jump on to what, I think we're here. So let me go ahead and share. Problem with sharing in Zoom is you can't get to your menu up top. All right, I'll do it this way. Can you see these? Can you see this?
Yep.
Okay. So there it is. Better. All right. So all right. So again, this was our, going back to what most of you have seen before, our assumptions that all, for the level service budget, that all staff will be rolled over. No additional staff are included, all contract obligations. And we're rolling into the base budget, all of the positions that are currently funded by either ARPA or SER funds. And again, these were the, the list of the positions that in fiscal twenty four are in fact funded by either ARPA or SER. Preschool coordinators partially funded. Remember the kindergarten aides several years ago were moved up from point eight to full time. That differential is funded through ARPA.
Sorry, we, I still only see the level service budget titles.
It hasn't changed. This is, so let's do this, this way. Now how's that? When you go into slideshow on a PowerPoint, sometimes it doesn't forwards on my end, it doesn't forward here. It's bizarre. All right. But these were the positions, the kindergarten aid differential, the ADA five oh four, team chair, one point eight FTEs, nurses, counselors, interventions, BCBAs and so forth, and just recently the additional school bus. So this is the question that was asked yesterday. Why is the increase to the general fund on the order of eight percent? And basically, the budget has a million, one point one million in SER funds. So the actual budget for fiscal twenty four, if you bring in the SER and ARPA funds is sixty two point seven, not sixty one point six. And the cost to maintain that, as we've worked through, is, you know, almost sixty seven million dollars. It's a six point eight percent increase. But to the general fund, because you're absorbing all the ARPA and SER funds, it looks more like an eight percent increase. And again, let's take the, going through this, why, why the six point eight percent increase in the total cost of the budget? Salary, five point eight, and the non-salary is a lot this year. That's unusual. The five point eight is almost entirely the need for additional special education staff, the instructional assistants. If you back out the instructional assistance, the ten that we had to add eleven, actually, since we, this time last year. If you back them out, there's only a four and a half percent increase in, in salaries. That's absolutely consistent, the fact that we have a two and a half percent COLA and steps and lanes generally run between two and two point two percent. So four point five percent is, is absolutely expected in terms of our salary. So the other, the reason it's higher is we have more instructional assistants in special education. And then we've heard this one before. Why, why did the non-salary costs go up so much? Again, primarily because since the fiscal twenty four budget was approved, the state approved this huge increase in private placement tuitions. So they put us actually in a hole for twenty four. We're catching it up in twenty five. So you're looking really in from, you're really looking at two years' worth of increments for the special education out of district tuition costs, because they weren't, you know, they, they were, weren't really budgeted for this year. So once you back that out and an adjustment in the, the athletic budget, which has been running over budget for a number of years, and the new school bus, it's really more like a two percent increase for everything else, which again, is not not out of range. This is a new chart because the preliminary twenty twenty three's per pupil spending was released this weekend. It's not finished yet. There are still, you'll notice a couple of them that we usually compare to Lexington and Natick for fiscal twenty three, haven't reported yet or haven't been finalized yet. It's a small chart. It's hard to read, but basically, we've been at the twenty fifth percentile for the last couple of years, where about the thirtieth percentile of those reported for fiscal twenty three, but you'll notice the couple that are unreported are in fact folks who are usually above us anyway. So I have a feeling our thirtieth percentile will drop a little lower once the rest of the districts are certified. So we are still spending, you know, fifty, according to this, fifteen hundred dollars a student, less than state average. So what's the picture now from the town? This is from yesterday's meeting. They, Amy and Nick have looked at some of the assumptions that were made in our, the initial revenue estimates. The, they looked at the health insurance trust fund. We are self-funded in health insurance and that has a a balance in it. And so the question is, what kind of increase, what kind of modification do you make in your health insurance cost? They were holding a five or six percent increase. They're recommending less than that. They're recommending a three and a half percent increase. They're also looking at the option of, of a one pay period payment holiday during fiscal twenty five. Because the health insurance trust fund is in good shape right now during COVID. Obviously, a lot of people didn't do elective surgeries and so forth. So the trust fund built up a balance. But on the same time, you don't want to wipe that out. You don't want to bring that down too much because then the, the rebound effect in following years, if you, if you make it too low now, you end up with a, a large increase in subsequent years. So it's a, it's a balancing act to see where to go with that. They're also getting new figures from the Board of Assessors, new growth. And are looking at various things like that. They're also proposing, as you might have heard, an increase in the trash sticker fee. The trash sticker fee hasn't changed since two thousand and six. So we're looking at, at changing that. Given that, right now, as of yesterday morning, anyway, the town can almost fund the level service budgets of all the departments. We're currently about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars short. I expect that's a moving number. We are early. We don't know where, you know, are there going to be any modifications? I'm not expecting a lot from the state this year, given the, the financial situation the state's in. But in the past, they have done things like looked at the minimum per pupil aid at sixty dollars instead of thirty. Whether they'll do that again, we don't know. That's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars if they go that route. So there are things going to be in play right now. So based on that and the, you know, sort of division of how one-time funds were spent last year, right now, we are looking at level service minus about three hundred thousand dollars, which is better than it's been in the past. We were looking at, you know, for a while it was a million and six hundred, five hundred. So it's creeping in the right direction, but we're creeping towards a level service budget, not towards a needs-based budget, not towards anything, you know, that adds anything. So while I'm hopeful that this three hundred and ten number will decrease over the next few weeks, whether it gets to zero or not remains to be seen, but hopefully it will still decrease some more. We're not looking at this point absent a proposition, two and a half override of anything more than at best level service or level service minus a little. I will, we will let the select board speak for themselves tonight, but I haven't heard a hue and cry for an override this year. Just leave it at that. So I think this is the, the ballpark we are likely to be playing in for this year. The question was asked, what, you know, of the needs, you know, what, what of the things on our needs list are we likely to need anyway? And that will affect the level service. We're looking at that. We've been, you know, the one question Mark asked was about the eighth grade folks at, at at Pierce because of the enrollment increase there. So Peter and I talked to Bill Fish yesterday and about how we would go about looking at that without those new staff. So right now we're looking at, anyway, level service minus a little, and we're trying to figure out where we will go from there. Obviously, we're not going to go into cuts of explicit positions here, because you would want to talk to all the staff first and so forth, but there are, there are some options. We could, you know, be looking at eliminating some of the positions that were funded by SER or ARPA. I mean, that's the simplest, not necessarily the best way. But I mean, that's an obvious choice. We can look at some reorganization of various different programs. Are there ways we can recombine things to save a position or something like that there? Danielle is working on trying to actually bring a couple of people back from out of district tuitions, out of district placements into our system. If we could do that, that would also make a dent. So we've got a few balls in the air here in terms of what we could do. We have, as I said, we have, there are options out there and basically since the three hundred and ten thousand dollar number isn't quite twenty four hours old yet. You know, we're not into the, into the real weeds of it, but we'll look at various different ways to do this over the next, you know, little while as we see how as we see how the numbers play out. So that's where we are as of today.
Thank you, Glenn. Before I dive into my questions, is there anyone on the school committee that has a question for Glenn? All right, go ahead.
One of the, well, I was, I have lots of questions about it, but like an initial one is another position that was flagged with needs-based budget is the ELL director, based on our increasing number of ELL students. And the requirements to have that position based upon a certain number of students? Is that another one that we would be to fund kind of regardless of level service or needs-based funding next year? And the second one is like, are, just to make sure I'm clear, are we essentially saying that the only way that we are definitely going to need to cut some positions in order to meet the level service funding? That, and like cover the deficit that, that's like we're currently envisioning in town. Two other questions.
All right. So the, the, the rule on, on the EL coordinators, we have to have someone who's, who is responsible now that we have the students to be the coordinator. That doesn't have to be necessarily a separate position. It can be a duty or a title associated with, for instance, a unit A or unit B, an existing position. That's again, part of the sort of programmatic reorganization. How do you, you would have to take some of the EL responsibilities away from that person so they could, they could coordinate the program and so forth. In many ways, it makes more sense to have a person whose sole job is doing that, but in, absent the ability to do that, we'll find that, we'll have to look at a different way to do that. Currently, we have two people who are sort of sharing the duties of the EL coordinator on an additional stipend basis. That's not optimal, but it, it fulfills the requirements. So there are options, but we would have to work out what's the, again, the best way to do that. That sort of falls into my category of programmatic reorganization.
Yeah. Do you mind if I do a quick follow-up to that? Because I think it's important to note that that sounds to me like it would be a, like a remedy for now. But it doesn't address sort of the issue that we have, which is we are seeing an increase in the numbers of students enrolled in the district. So therefore, we can't continue to just kind of hop along with sort of restructuring it in this way, when in reality, we're going to need a dedicated staff member to be focused on this. I just think it's important for, for, for us to put it out there that, you know, this could be a solution for the interim, but really, I think to Peter's opening statements, you know, we really need to look at ourselves in the mirror and say, is this the town we want to be? Or do we want to make sure we have what we need to meet the needs of all of our students? But it does sound to me, it's, it's just a, it's just a crisis sort of response right now, but it's not the ideal situation.
This is definitely a kick the can down the road budget. There's, there's no other way to describe. That's
So I just, oh, go ahead, Glenn.
Mark, your second question was, oh, is our, I see the only way to do this. No, not necessarily. I mean, we don't have a lot of play in our non-salary budget because we, your salary is eighty four percent or whatever of the, the total budget. Part of what we're looking at is, you know, and I sort of alluded to Danielle's looking at special education. For instance, if we can bring a, a special education student in from out of district, which we are hoping to try to do this year, that will certainly save money on tuitions and so forth. And that, you know, obviates the need to, to make another cut in another area. Those are all obviously negotiations. IEPs have to be agreed to by parents, you know, if, you know, they have stay-put rights and so forth. So it's not a, a clear thing that we say we can service this child in district. We'd like to bring them back. We have to get parental agreement to do that. So it's, that's why that's another one of the balls that are up in the air until we get the next I team meeting and IP meeting to see whether that can be done. We won't know. So yeah, there are other places other than staff, but not many. You're really we run into, once you get past utilities and, and special education tuitions, there are, that's the bulk of your non-salary budget.
And we run into the space issue again, too, in terms of for some of those students being able to, to build programming where we can serve those students in district. We don't currently have space. We also, our enrollment for kindergarten is up. What, what's the final number now, Glenn?
No, there's no final number, but we're up probably twenty five or so above this point last year. This current year, we have fifteen kindergarten classes, which has actually saved us a little because that's a little lower than it's been. We've been running sixteen for several years. We actually only had fifteen this year in fiscal twenty four, but we are looking at sixteen again in fiscal twenty five. So we have a, an extra class rolling off fifth grade at Glover School. So the extra kindergarten will likely be at Glover and we'll have to look at how to assign students and most reasonable way to get them into the classes nearest their homes and so forth, but that's upcoming.
Yeah, but there's not like what I, what I'm referencing here is there's just, there's not one space. We don't have a, there's no empty space anywhere. So there's no place to like, if we wanted to bring a certain subset of students back and create a program, we have nowhere to go right now.
We, we have to either modify an existing program in an existing space to, to make that student or determine that that student can actually be served by an existing program in an existing space.
So Anna, I had a comment and a question that I've been, been waiting on, but I think is, is very pertinent to all of this. I'm optimistic about a level service budget, but I wouldn't assume that the select board isn't willing to entertain an override. I think the biggest challenge we faced is we lost a lot of time this spring on MBA, MBTA communities that we would have otherwise spent educating the public on the needs that we have. And, you know, people are still running for office in this truncated time period. And I think it's worthwhile having honest discussion with the select board once again about every year we underfund this town because it's really hard for people to wrap their brains around meeting the needs that reflect our asks. We've been asked to improve test scores. We've been asked to provide an excellent education, but we cannot do it on a shoestring budget. I do think that there are, I don't even like to pretend that any of the positions on that need-based list feel optional because they're not. There, there wasn't frivolous additions of, of things we don't need. But I do think that we could possibly prioritize them. If the select board has been fortunate enough to find the, when we started this conversation in January, there was a four million dollar hole. We found four million, not we, I did not. Someone found four million dollars in less than two months. I think it might be worth having that conversation with the select board. I don't know whether or not their intention is to finalize their budget proposal. But when I shared with members of the community that we had been asked at our last meeting to cut five hundred thousand dollars, they were appalled. And I think they'd be disappointed to know that yet again, we're in the bottom quartile and there are positions that we need that we cannot get. We know the middle school teachers are, they're, they're insufficient teachers in those classes and, and student enrollment is high. We know that the Attorney General is going after social media companies for the mental health impacts that they have. And we need more adjustment counselors. And I remember we needed a reading specialist. I know what our scores look like. So I don't want to assume the door is closed. It might be, but I wouldn't assume that. And I think we have, in the same time it takes our school, our school committee chair and all the other members that are running to office, if they can create a campaign in two months, I think it's worthwhile talking to the select board and making our case to the public more outside of these finance committee meetings and outside of the school committee meetings, because I think it's worth a conversation. We're asking for a million dollars, not twenty million. It seems very small, but we haven't asked. So I would love to get anyone's feedback on that, but I don't want to assume the door is closed because we wouldn't be appropriately representing our students and the staff if we didn't have these conversations openly. Anna?
Thank you. So a couple of things. I just wanted to kind of get some background on why the select board is maybe not wanting to push for an override?
All right. I'm not going to pretend to get into anyone's head other than my own. I think that's a question for the select board. I'm, I'm just saying frankly, I'm not hearing it.
Okay.
Doesn't mean they're not thinking it, but I'm, I'm not hearing.
Because I have a follow-up question for you. When we were in the warrant committee, finance, the warrant committee that was assigned to the school committee, there were several members that asked about funding, whether it was pilot or an override. I think it's worthwhile getting the support of the warrant committee. If they attend that select board meeting and reference the same concerns they shared with us, then it's more than just us.
Okay. So then my, my next one would be, I know last spring, you know, we pushed for the we pushed for the land swap and we had, you know, students without space. And now on top of that, to add that we're going to be cutting, you know, positions that we need, it it just doesn't feel right that like we're even having this conversation right now because we should be pushing for, you know, focusing on short term space, focusing on long term space as well as funding some of those positions that are needed, you know, and we talk about bringing students back into the district as Peter mentioned, there is no space for them. We also, like Danielle had a long list of positions that she needed in order to make that stuff happen. So without those, it's like, I don't even know, like, it just seems kind of like a waste to talk about all this without, you know, and really make the case for the override. Because, you know, it just, it just doesn't seem right, you know, to me personally, because our students are still struggling with space. Our teachers need space. We're not addressing any of those right now because now we're looking at cutting a couple of hundred thousand dollars. And, you know, I think there are ways we can look at being efficient and some of this, some of the positions, maybe we look, look again at like, hey, are these positions really useful, you know, and add some of those positions, like as Selena mentioned, we need an ELL director. We can't just put Band-Aids on and temporary fixes. But, you know, where are areas that we can be a little bit more efficient, you know, like, I know I've heard from many people in the past about residency, like, is that something we can look at, you know, like, I'm just saying, like, I'm not saying like, that's what we need to focus on. I'm just like, as we're trying to be more efficient and as we go to the community to ask for money, like, hey, look at all these areas that we, like, we really, really looked at, like, hey, how can we be more efficient, efficient in these areas? But at the same time, we're trying everything we can. But we need this, this funding to be the great district that we can. So I think it, it needs to be a bit of a compromise. So I think there is going to be some legwork that needs to be put in, but I think that it would be a much easier sell to the community. Thanks.
Mark?
Can I share my screen real quick? Do you think so? I'll say as this is enabled, I again.
I'm looking.
Appreciate. I, I mean, I agree with them. And as Joe pointed like, I, I don't. I don't think we're in a position where like, again, we as a school committee should be accepting or advocating for you know, reduction in services for our kids when we know they're already not receiving the level of service that we as the elected representatives of the town to advocate at school. That we don't feel like they're, they're getting what they need right now and to accept the fact that they are going to receive less simply because you know, it is a tight timeline and I, I understand that it's a tight timeline and all of these conversations happen earlier. And I think within these, you know, meetings, we've talked about this since December and I'm frustrated at the fact that, you know, a lot of this has been delayed due to other priorities. Because at the end of the day, our, our kids are ones who suffer here. Were you able to allow me to share my screen?
It says you are allowed. That's the interesting thing.
Those disabled persons on screen share. Can you?
Oh, let me try this. I'm going to put you up to a co-host.
That'd be great. Thanks.
That should allow you to do it.
There. All right. So I was pulling a bunch of data from the DESI website. So all this information is on DESI's website. So I was looking at, right, I think we talk all the time about like our funding versus our performance. And I just want to reemphasize how well our district is performing compared to how poorly we are supporting the district. And so if you look at grades three through eight percent meeting or exceeding on the MCAS. Right. This is our performance across the, the board and obviously again, not saying there are not gaps and there are not places that we need to do better and certain groups that we need to target or schools we need to target. But across the board, we are in the, you know, very close to the top ten percent of all districts in the state and how our students are performing on standardized tests, which provides us a common picture. And again, I know most of you, all of you on this call kind of know this. I mostly like to do this kind of for public and to try and start the conversation of the public push here. Our, our per people and our property tax rates, residential, this is a residential property tax rate are both in the bottom third. They are not equivalent to what we are doing as it relates to kind of performance on our tests. So what we are providing our kids, we are drastically outperforming. And our contributions to our schools have decreased over time. It's getting worse and the trend lines are going down. And this is not like the actual rate, the actual rates are going down. But our rates, again, compared to other districts in the state is getting worse. We used to be at the thirty seventh percentile and per people, we are now under thirtieth percentile as of twenty twenty two. And again, I, I agree with Glenn. I think that's going to drop even a little bit more. This year, I'm certain it will drop more next year. If we don't have an override, we'll be, you know, closer to the twenty fifth percentile. Property tax rates, again, as a comparison against residential property tax rates across the town, across the state are also decreasing in terms of what we are contributing. And I use residential property tax rate because we know we don't have a commercial base here. When we compare ourselves, and I know there's a lot of numbers here. But essentially, I took the top ten percent performing districts in MCAS in twenty twenty three as well as the top ten percent of districts in MCAS prior to the pandemic, just because there is some pandemic loss there. Most of them are the exact same districts as you'd expect. And if we look at their per people tuition rate, there are only three districts that perform better than Milton that spend less than. Very like Milton is at the bottom of high performing districts. So we take out all the districts that are spending less than us and performing less than us. We're not in the bottom, you know, thirty percent. We're, we're even slightly lower. If we look at our comparison districts, right, the ones that Desi say based upon demographics, size, you know, other, other factors that we are kind of, these are the ones that they think of us being similar to. We are again, at the bottom, and the only two that are below us are not in the ten percent, top ten percent of MCAS performance. In fact, the only other ones that are comparable to us, again, based upon these like size, demographics, things like that, they are in the fiftieth percentile for specific. So we're not even close. And I think if we look at the needs based budgets, the point that I was making, we are not talking about asking for twenty million dollars. We are asking about a billion dollars to fund reading interventionists, counselors, special education assistance to support with the special ed needs, which we know we are not doing a good job. ELL director, a little bit of extra nursing support, the middle school teaching positions we discussed previously, high school teaching positions to reduce class size. A, a second librarian for the district that has five schools, I'm sorry, six schools. Right. And HR director for a district that has five hundred employees and we do not have a dedicated person to support hiring and HR, you know, leaves, complaints, discrimination, like, that is crazy. And a halftime communication specialist. Like, these are not ridiculous positions. These are very reasonable positions and it's surprising we don't have these already in many situations. So I just like, want to emphasize as I look at this and I hear pushback to an idea that like, we, we really shouldn't be asking for this. I think that's ludicrous. Like, I think we absolutely should be pounding the table saying if the town wants to make cuts elsewhere in order to provide us this minimal additional funding, which again, with the extra million dollars, I doubt will even be much above the, you know, thirty second percentile. Like, we're, we're not going to jump up that page and be at the fiftieth percentile. We're going to be just a little bit above where we are for these positions. It, it to me is, I think, our role as a school committee to make sure it's clear that like, this is the budget we voted on. These are things we said we need. And ultimately, it's out of our control. The select board doesn't report with a with an override on the warrant. But we wouldn't be doing our job, I don't believe, unless we were like really doing our best to pound the table and say like, actually, level service isn't, isn't good enough. It's just not good for our kids. We, we need more. And so like, you found to the point that made earlier, like you found four million dollars to close this gap? Great. Find the schools another million dollars and let's get these positions. Because, you know, we, we desperately need these to serve.
Thank you, Mark. I completely agree with you. And I think that it's a matter of going to the select board. So Anna, you had your hand up?
Yep. One, yes. One of the things I noticed on that list of our requests is to reading interventionists. And I do want to put it out there because I've been hearing a lot from parents, including this past weekend, that our reading curriculum is something that needs to be looked at. So that's something that concerns me that we are, you know, looking for two reading interventionists and, you know, our reading curriculum is probably not where it needs to be. So again, I think we're putting on Band-Aids for temporary fixes, but there are other things that we should be looking at long term. Like, is this working? Should we be, you know, looking at introducing a, you know, more efficient curriculum, you know? And then we can look at like, are those positions still needed after the fact? So I think, I think those types of conversations need to have long term as well. I think, you know, and I think when we plan for overrides, it can't just be like, oh, you know, we're getting over this one and then next year we'll have to ask for another one. We have to have a plan in place, you know, and how often those need to happen because there needs to be a set. You know, I think a lot of people like tend to like hear overrides and they're like, oh, my gosh, another one, you know? But I think if there is like a plan, hey, we might have to do one every few years. I think that also helps. And then what is our plan for, for where our district wants to be? Like, these are the things that we need to improve, work on, you know? We need to introduce a new curriculum for this. We need to, we need to develop more over here. We need to really build out our special ed department. You know, so I think those conversations need to be part of this versus like, hey, we need an override because we've been putting a Band-Aid on. Like, I get that, but I think also sharing what our long term plan is to the community helps, will help them buy off on it.
And just to, I agree, Anna, and I think one of the things that we are benefiting from is a permanent superintendent who has been able to identify the required positions that we need. And if we wait until next year, it's, it's beyond kicking the can. Every year, there is some crisis that's distracting. And if we don't ask now, it'll be the same thing next year. Selena?
Yes. So, Mark, I, I just appreciate you so much. Thank you for, for doing that. I think it really does strengthen for why we need to do, you know, look at an override seriously. But really think, I think also reframing that it's not, we're not asking for nice to haves. And I think that's something that I, I remember saying sort of last year as we were going through the budget process. Because again, I think we are used to sort of going through the motions in a way that really sort of emphasizes they, you know, the, the needs based, right? Versus the additional things that we need. And so, or, and so where, where I was going with that is that we really, if we look at everything that was on that slide, you know, of all the additional things that, the, the, the additional items that you identified as necessary for us to do, do well, do well or do right by our students that we're really looking at one point four million. That's how much we need. Right? Because if we're being asked to cut three hundred and ten thousand, right? And that's just level funding, right? But the additional are an additional million dollars, one point seven, I think one point zero seven five, I think was the, the total. That really comes to one point four million dollars that we need to try to find. And I think that needs to be framed in that way, right? And what is it that we're giving up? If we don't look seriously at an override? I think that is something that I think going back to a point that you made, Bev, or a question you asked, right? Are we willing to put ourselves out there and push for an override? I think I know I'm willing to because our students need, we, we owe that to our students. We owe that to our community to be able to push for everything that is, that the district needs in order to do the work and to set up our, I think, our new leader up for success. If we're like, keep saying, no, we can't do this, we can't do this. And I think another point that I would like to make is, I think, Anna, I've, I've heard you say sort of this idea of compromise. And I, and I, or like, you know, finding sort of the middle ground. And as much as I sort of, I tend to approach things in that way. I'm going to say, you know what? No, we, we have been compromising for so long. Instead of saying, all right, what are we going to cut? What are we going to take away? But the reality is that we need to do better. And I think the analysis, quick analysis that Mark just showed us really, I think, shows points to the data on how we can, you know, hold ourselves to do better and to push the district and the community forward so that we can do what we need to do to have the resources so that we can continue to meet the expectations that I think that we all have, which is that every single one of our students succeeds. So I just want to sort of do that framing because I think it's important for us to look at the whole in that way and think of, I don't know, I feel like this time we, we, we need to push. We, we shouldn't be compromising.
So I'm glad that it sounds like there's some. The general consensus here is we should be asking for what we need and not accept what we are get, what have been getting. I know the select board is meeting tonight. And I know that there are members of the select board that are watching this call. And I know that I have a meeting in thirteen minutes. So I would love to discuss next steps with you all in terms of reaching out to the town administrator, attending the select board meeting and making it clear that we have an ask. And then also creating an opportunity to have more conversations with our community about what our needs are. In terms of immediate next steps, Glenn or Peter, are you in, do you anticipate having a meeting with Nick today prior to the select board meeting? I'm sure whatever we're talking, what we're talking about right now will likely fall under the agenda. So it's not that that needs to be modified because it'll be part of the FY twenty five budget discussion.
We can certainly reach out to him today. Yeah.
That'd be very much appreciated. And second, we have to have a public hearing on our budget. I don't know if this constitutes that, but I don't think it does. So what is the timing, Glenn? Do you have any information you can share on the parameters of that meeting?
Charlene posted it for.
I think it's next week.
Yeah. Before the school committee meeting on Wednesday, the sixth, because we had to advertise in the newspaper, you know, two weeks in advance and so forth. So it's for the school, that school committee meeting just before.
So I think, assuming that the select board finance subcommittee does not put forth a final budget tonight, we, if we would be willing to consider having community conversations similar to Peter's onboarding plan, I know I've mentioned this before, where we talked to our friends at Fuller Village, we talked to our friends in Winter Valley, we talked to the different community groups that were part of his onboarding plan. Is that something that people feel makes sense to execute? I would love to have it as part of a larger town conversation. That's something that Nick and the select board would have to buy into. But I want to make sure that before we make that ask of them, that that's something we're willing to do.
I mean, I'm willing to talk to, firstly, whoever, whoever we need to talk to, I just think the first, first, most important step is the select board and the timeline for, for that engagement to, because my understanding.
It's today.
From Nick is that, yeah, essentially, they're going to make the decision on if they're doing an override today. And again, even today is late in like the processes, at least the kind of them wrongly doing it and then beginning to engage in kind of these public conversations. I completely agree that if, if that's the direction that we're able to afford it, you know, that type of engagement that makes all the sense in the world. It's going to need to happen in order to get the support. And I think it is incumbent upon us, again, if we as a group are saying, these are needs our kids deserve to fill, that, you know, we need to put in the, the legwork to, to sell that and, you know, communicate that clearly to to folks about the ask.
Thank you. And Peter?
Yeah, I'm always ready to go.
All right. So I feel like we at least have reasonable next steps. I have in my notes that Peter and Glenn will reach out to Nick today. Um, the select board finance committee is on this call right now, so they're hearing these messages. So I'm happy to engage the chair of that finance subcommittee, which is a select board member, Erin Bradley. Our forum is already scheduled, our public hearing for the budget is already scheduled. And assuming that we get approval from the select board to at least engage in an override discussion, that's when we'll start to schedule those discussions with the community with Peter's time and hopefully other representatives from the town. Sound good? All right, Mark?
Yeah, just, do we need? Do we need a vote? I just don't know, like, I
No, we can vote on it.
And welcome to, you know, say things as an individual, but I just don't want to personally speak for the board. Unless like there's
You know what?
Stated consensus that this is the direction we want to go. And I think my feelings have been made clear, but I just don't feel we get to make that clear as to where folks stand on. If we should advocate for an override in order to make love for service budget or not.
I don't know if it requires a vote, but we can take one because we have a quorum before I run off the phone. So may I get a motion for the three-step next step plan related to the FY twenty-five budget? Remember Laura? Motion? Thank you.
I was trying to think of them.
Dr. Miranda?
Uh, yes, a second.
All right. All in favor? Aye. Remember Laura?
Uh, yes.
Selena?
Yes.
All right. So we're good to go. We've got our vote. Is there anything else? Go ahead.
Sorry, I, I know that's above the finance committee. Are we then going to do a full vote of the school committee on Wednesday? I, I just want to be clear as to like, tonight at the select board meeting, if anybody is going to go in front of the select board to speak on behalf of the school committee as a whole or not. And so like,
No, that's, that's important because I physically cannot be there. I will be in the air. Is there anyone here that can make that call? I know that Peter said he would be able to talk to Nick today. Is anyone on this call able to attend that meeting?
I can probably attend remotely, but I, I just want to name that like, I want a school committee vote. And I know Val was not here unfortunately, but like versus just the finance committee vote.
No, there's enough here for the, for a forum. Lizzie?
Yeah, Lizzie, I saw your hand up. Everybody, yeah. So, um, I I am planning or can, um, attend in person this evening. I'm just double checking our agenda um, here for this morning. So, um, FY twenty-five budget is on our agenda for discussion. That's the item. I just want to double check, Glenn, is this possible under that agenda posted to take this vote for the full school committee?
Yeah, it's cross posted as a full school committee meeting. That was on the agenda. That's obviously a fiscal twenty-five budget issue. It's not a problem taking the motion.
Great. So I guess in that case, then sure, why don't we take a full school committee vote now to reinforce the finance subcommittee vote that you just took? I can talk to you, you know, Mark, I, I, like I said, I can attend the meeting tonight. I think I, I just dropped the kids off at school and during this meeting. So I apologize for not participating, but I just will want to say I appreciate everybody's thoughtful participation, Mark, especially everything that you brought to it with that analysis. And I'm just very proud to be with all you smart, thoughtful people on this committee right now. Um, I think it's such an important message that, and I, I'm glad this meeting's, you know, been recorded. It will be available for people to watch and we can do our best to amplify what's been discussed here. So, um, I, I'll make a motion to approve the three-part plan. A second. Okay. Um, so we'll do a roll called vote. Um, Anna?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Selena?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So there's that. Thank you all.
All right. So it's eight fifty-six AM. I absolutely need to adjourn the finance subcommittee. Make it a motion.
Move to adjourn. Okay.
Second out. Selena, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. We are adjourned at eight fifty-six.
Oh, is the full school committee also adjourned? Glenn?
You should.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the full school committee.
Second. Okay. Selena?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Okay. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thanks, everyone. And Glenn, Glenn and I are going to be, um, probably virtual tonight for the select board meeting too.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We'll be there.
Thank you. With slides if needed.
We'll be ready.
I as well.
We'll be ready.
All right. Thank you all for the wonderful work we've done this morning. I think we did the right thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.